Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. Due to the recent success of the new car market, there is a large inventory of used cars available for resale. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for. With over fifteen years at this location and twenty-seven years' experience in the business, we are the best place to go to find your next car, truck, van, or SUV. As a member of the Better Business Bureau, we are a Carfax Advantage dealer and offer great financing rates through a local area bank with warranties available on most vehicles. We know your time is valuable, so we take special pride in making sure that you get what you came for at a price that you can afford.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at carriagecompany.com.
The Frank E. Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at (740) 653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster or 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at (740) 654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, connorinsuranceagency.com.
Welcome to this meeting of Lancaster City Council. Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for this day, another day to be alive and to enjoy your beautiful creation. Thank you for the warm weather and the turning of the seasons. We thank you for this weekend that we've just come through and the promise of new life through your son, Jesus. Father, we pray today that you would continue to be with us, lead, guide, and direct us as we go about the work that has been set before us. May we rightly do what we are called here to do, what we are elected here to do, to ensure that Lancaster remains a great place to live, work, and raise a family. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Here.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stoughton?
Here.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated April 8, 2018.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated April 10, 2010, or 2019, that would be an old one, wouldn't it? 2019 regarding the CDBG application filing deadline submitted by Mary Jo Smith, Executive Director, Community Development Department. Email dated April 11, 2019 regarding the agenda for the Public Works Committee meeting submitted by Mr. Schoonover. Email dated April 11, 2019 regarding resignation submitted by President Oul. Email dated April 15, 2019 regarding resignations submitted by Mr. Bowles. Email dated April 15, 2019 regarding draft meeting minutes submitted by Mr. Stoughton. And finally, an email dated April 17, 2019 regarding the CDBG performance report review letter submitted by Mary Jo Smith, Executive Director, Community Development Department.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports to city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There is one. Notice to the legislative authority of a transfer of a liquor license from Four Reasons Inc., doing business as Four Reasons Bakery and Deli located at 136 West Main Street, first floor, Lancaster, Ohio, 43130, to Provisions LLC, doing business as Four Reasons Bakery and Deli located at the same location in Lancaster House, submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We do have one special presentation this evening. Mr. Bowles, if you will please join me at the podium.
Perhaps all or some of you have heard by now, but Mr. Bowles is planning to resign from City Council, in fact, has resigned from City Council effective, I believe, April 30th. And so tonight, we want to present him with a plaque for his service to the city. It says, "Presented to John Bowles, At-Large Representative for the City of Lancaster for August 3, 2017 through April 30, 2019, in honor of your service to the citizens of the City of Lancaster presented by City Council on this date." Mr. Bowles, you stepped in for us at a time where we needed someone to step in, where we needed some help. We are truly appreciative of your service and want to thank you tonight for what you've done. Let's show Mr. Bowles our appreciation for his service.
I call you and the citizens of Lancaster for electing me to office, and I'm returning to retirement. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
During this portion of our meeting, City Council sets time aside for voters and taxpayers of Lancaster to address City Council on any item or issue that they would like. If you'd like to address Lancaster City Council tonight, we invite you to come forward to the podium, sign in with your name and address, and then state the same for the record. Please note that while City Council members may choose to respond to you at a later portion of tonight's meeting, they will not do so during this portion of the meeting. In addition, we ask that in accordance with the rules of council, you keep your comments to five minutes or less. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Well, see, none. Thank you all for being here. You can tell that the weather has turned nice. So, we're glad that you are here, though, for those who are in attendance. Reports of standing committees.
I have two. Finance Committee meeting minutes for April 22, 2019 submitted by Mr. Stoughton, and the Water Water Pollution Control meeting minutes for April 17, 2019 submitted by Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 47-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the LDOT Fund 208 and amend the certificate with county auditor offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 47-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 47-19. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover.
This is to appropriate $30,000 to repair and replace the control box and control arms at the Columbus-Fair Avenue intersection after an accident. So, we're just moving some money around so they can do that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 47-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 48-19.
Okay, go ahead. All right. A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute the membership agreement and bylaws to become a member of NeoRide and Ohio Council of Governments, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 48-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 48-19. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover.
This is an opportunity for public transit to join NeoRide. It gives a lot of great opportunities in terms of purchasing and buying power. Ms. Woody is looking to upgrade ticketing services on LPT to make it much more rider-friendly, so we're looking to pass this today.
Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 48-19 passes nine to zero. We don't have a second reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 53-19.
A resolution of consent for preliminary legislation for the widening of Edie Road with the addition of turn lanes at County Road 33A, Memorial Drive, and County Road 37, North Columbus Street within the City of Lancaster, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
Second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 53-19. Temporary Resolution 54-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Stormwater Fund 606, amend the certificate of appropriation with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 54-19. Discussion, Mr. Woodard.
None at this point.
Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 54-19. Discussion, Mr. Woodard. This is one that we're doing so that we can take in the money and prove the fact that some of the money is taken in from the Stormwater Totally Fund is kept by the county agency, the auditor, and this is to clear up everything on that.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 56-19 passes nine to zero. Wait a second. That's not right. 53-19, no, 54. Why doesn't anyone know what I'm doing?
You know what I'm doing.
54.
You said it.
I said the wrong one.
No. You said 54.
I said the right one.
You said yes.
Okay. It passed nine to zero, whichever one we're working on. Temporary Resolution 56. You're rubbing off on me, Mr. Woodard. Temporary Resolution 56-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or his designee to execute any and all documents necessary to facilitate development of the Magna Seating of America project in the Rock Mill Industrial Park, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution Temporary 56-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 56-19. Mr. Stoughton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As many of us know, the arrangement between Magna and them arriving in Lancaster, Ohio, took a lot of agreements from the state level, all the way down through the county and to the city level. There'll be a lot of documentation that will need to be agreed to. This gives the city administration the opportunity to move that at a fast pace because Magna wants to move at a fast pace. And these are all agreements that have been previously agreed to. This is just the documentation that follows it up, so we want to suspend tonight to give them the opportunity to keep this project moving as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 56-19. Further discussion, Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 56-19 passes nine to zero. We're now first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 58-19.
A resolution to amend Permanent Resolution 44-19, authorizing the Service Safety Director to waive competitive bidding for the Pioneer Alley Storm Sewer Replacement Project and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. Woodard, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend and waive its rules on the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 58-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 58-19. Discussion, Mr. Woodard.
As we have mentioned here, this is to amend a previous resolution where we authorized the work on the Pioneer Alley Sewer Project. In doing that, with a video camera, found out there's additional problems there, and with that being in the area of the 188 repairs by the state of Ohio, that makes it an emergency to get in there and get that taken care of because it could cause a problem that would deteriorate and be a problem with the health and wellness of the people in that area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Woodard.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 58-19. Further discussion, Mr. Woodard.
Nothing further.
Any discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 58-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 59-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the Fairfield County Municipal Court to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Fairfield County Commissioners to fund the Sentinel Offenders Services Contract for Electronic Monitoring of Criminal Offenders to be utilized by the Fairfield County Municipal Court, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This legislation and the 60 behind it are basically a new hardware platform for electronic monitoring that is a much more vibrant platform and less expensive for the county and the city to use. So, these next two pieces will basically fund and authorize that, and this will be the first of two readings.
First of two readings, then, on Temporary Resolution 59-19. Temporary Resolution 60-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to dispense with competitive bidding and enter into a contract for electronic monitoring services for criminal offenders under the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program to be utilized by the Fairfield County Municipal Court, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel. Sorry, I did not mark that when they said that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of two readings, please.
First of two readings on Temporary Resolution 60-19. Are there further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? As we continue on, can all members make sure your microphones are please on, please? On, please? Use your microphone on, Mr. Woodard. Excellent, very good, all right. We'll move on to the reading of ordinances, then, beginning with the second reading of temporary ordinance 6-19.
An ordinance to authorize the Service Safety Director to accept approximately 10 acres, more or less, of property situated in Township 14, Range 19, Sections 2 and 3, City of Lancaster, Fairfield County, from Fairfield Homes, Inc., offered by Mr. Graff, second by Mr. Bowles.
Mr. Graff.
This will be the second of three readings?
Second of three readings, then, on temporary ordinance 6-19. We have first reading on temporary ordinance 7-19.
An ordinance to repeal and replace Lancaster Codified Ordinances, Part 13, Building Code, Chapter 1303, Technical Code, Section 1303.06, Appeal, Membership and Qualifications of Appeal Board Members of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lancaster and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. Graff, second by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Graff.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading for temporary ordinance 7-19.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 7-19. Mr. Graff? Any discussion?
Yes, this is, along with the next ordinance, will both have the same explanations. ORC, or the Ohio Revised Code, provides 30 days to file an appeal. Lancaster Codified Ordinances provide only 20 days to file an appeal. The Fifth District Court of Appeals has held that 20 days is not sufficient. Therefore, the next two ordinances actually will bring the Lancaster Codified Ordinances into line with the Ohio Revised Code.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Graff. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Graff?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and the third reading for temporary ordinance 7-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 7-19. Mr. Graff? Any discussion?
Yes, this is, along with the next ordinance, will both have the same explanation. ORC, or the Ohio Revised Code, provides 30 days to file an appeal. Lancaster Codified Ordinances provide only 20 days to file an appeal. The Fifth District Court of Appeals has held that 20 days is not sufficient. Therefore, the next two ordinances actually will bring the Lancaster Codified Ordinances into line with the Ohio Revised Code.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Graff. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 7-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance 8-19.
This is one that we're doing so that we can take in the money and approve the fact that some of the money that's taken in from the Stormwater Totally Fund is kept by the county agency, the auditor, and this is to clear up everything on that.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 56-19 passes nine to zero. Wait a second. That's not right. 53-19, no, 54. Why doesn't anyone know what I'm doing?
You know what I'm doing.
54.
You do.
I said the wrong one.
No. You said 54.
I said the right one.
Yeah.
Okay. It passed nine to zero, whichever one we're working on. Temporary Resolution 56, you're dropping off on me, Mr. Woodard. Temporary Resolution 56-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or his designee to execute any and all documents necessary to facilitate development of the Magna Seating of America project in the Rock Mill Industrial Park, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution 56-19.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third and reading of Temporary Resolution 56-19. Mr. Stoughton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As many of us know, the arrangement between Magna and them arriving in Lancaster, Ohio, took a lot of agreements from the state level, all the way down through the county and to the city level. There'll be a lot of documentation that will need to be agreed to. This gives the city administration the opportunity to move that at a fast pace because Magna wants to move at a fast pace. And these are all agreements that have been previously agreed to. This is just the documentation that follows it up, so we want to suspend tonight to give them the opportunity to keep this project moving as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 58-19 passes nine to zero. Are there further ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? We have no tabled legislation tonight, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Does anyone have any unfinished business this evening? Mr. Woodard.
Just a question, administration. I know a couple of months ago, we had a major discussion on the street surfaces in the River Valley Mall areas, and especially along where Murfield is. Have we had any communications from the company that handles that, as far as their ideas about fixing that?
I convened a meeting of all the property owners who have a stake in that road. There are nine property owners along that road. Three weeks ago, tomorrow, their follow-up meeting is tomorrow, and I am told that a representative of the Glimcher Company will be there at that meeting. So, it will be held in City Hall. We're hosting the meeting, but it's really their meeting, and we'll be present to answer questions or address any issues that they bring up, but it is a property owner issue, and they'll be discussing it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on any old business? Mr. Groff, do you have any update on where we're at regarding consideration of the rules of council that was recommended?
We did discuss that at the law committee meeting last week. I believe we ended that with, Mr. Ullam would like a little more time to do a little more research on it.
Okay, very good. And then, Mr. Ullam, are you in a position to give us an update on small cell tower lawsuits?
Yes. So, as you know, we entered with approximately, I want to say, 50 or 60 other cities to challenge the legislation that came through with regard to small cell towers, predominantly because it was attached to legislation that was completely different subject matter than that issue. So, we challenged it in court on the single-subject rule legislation. It was, that case was actually filed in Franklin County. The Franklin County trial court, of course, found in our favor, in the city's favor, in that it was a violation of the single-subject rule. The state appealed it to the 10th District Court of Appeals. While that appeal was in its process, the state legislature basically got the parties together, sat at the table, both in the industry side and on the government side, and they came up with House Bill 478, which addressed the issues, and the legislature, then, state legislature passed that, which in essence made the appeal issue moot, for those of us that were in it for that particular reason. The state decided they wanted to continue to pursue the appeal because they want the court, the 10th District Court of Appeals, to basically throw out the decision of the lower court, just because they don't want a case out there saying that they lost a single-subject rule. And there are some cities or whatever that are pursuing that still with the courts, and it has a scheduling date, I think, for motions and stuff set here in a month or so, for the cities pursuing that. But, in essence, you know, House Bill 478 kind of fixed the problem for us.
We're not one of the cities pursuing that.
No, I mean, we're technically still in it as a city, but the issue with regard to that wasn't really something that, and the attorneys that we had retained or whatever to do that have since left the case, and in a couple of cities, I think Columbus, maybe Akron, are still pursuing that. So, I guess we're all part of that as to how that turns out, but basically, they just wanted that ruling to stand with the 10th District, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Ullam? Any further unfinished business this evening? Any new business tonight that anyone has? I hear there is a birthday among us, Treasurer Wolfinger, celebrating his 40th birthday tonight. Is that right?
I thought you said 49.
49?
39.
Oh, 39.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're the same age, that's it. Yeah. Actually, someone said 60, is that right? Is this your 60th birthday?
It's in the 60s.
It's in the 60s, okay. Well, happy birthday, Mr. Wolfinger. We appreciate you and your service to the city. Further new business this evening? I'll just mention one more time, Mr. Bowles, this is your last meeting. Thank you again for your service, we appreciate it, and wish you well in your re-retirement. Re-retirement, yes, very good. Further new business? If not, we'll ask the clerk to read the announcement of scheduled meetings.
Upcoming meetings, May 6th at 6:30 p.m. The meeting following, May 20th at 6:30 p.m. Both here in City Council chambers. Finance Committee, May 6th, 6:00 p.m. Here in Council Chambers. Service, May 10th at 7:30 a.m. At the Gas Department Conference Room. Water Water Pollution Control, May 15th at 7:00 a.m. At the Water Water Pollution Control Conference Room. And finally, Finance, May 20th at 6:00 p.m. Here in Council Chambers.
Thank you very much. Are there any bills this evening?
We have one. To PNC, payable to Spotlight Trophies and Awards, $28 for the plaque.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a need for an executive session this evening? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.[1753.01]